Good morning. Being 9:00 AM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Committee of the whole meeting of December 12th, 2024, and Mr. Sullivan will lead us in the pledge this morning.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, could you call the roll, please?
Pamela Althoff. Carolyn Campbell. John Collins. Joseph Gotamaller. Terry Greeno. Eric Hendricks. Carl Kaminski. James Kearns. Deana Krager. Matthew Kunkel. Brian Sager. Michael Shorten. Michael Scala. Patrick Sullivan. Larry Smith. Paul Thomas. Gloria Van Haath. Tracy Von Bergen. Chairman Bueller.
Here. Having a quorum, we'll proceed. Good morning. I have a handful of items to share with you before we review the agenda for next Tuesday's voting meeting. On Thursday, December 5th, I attended the quarterly meeting of the Council of County Board Chairs for the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. Among the items on the agenda was a presentation from World Business Chicago President and CEO Phil Clement regarding the next steps for the Greater Chicagoland Economic Partnership to which we belong, along with Cook County, the Coller Counties, and the City of Chicago. After two years as a member county, we are now entering the third and final year of our initial agreement. Leadership at World Business Chicago and GSEP are hard at work on developing GSEP 2.0, the next phase of our mutual effort to attract economic development from around the world to our region for the benefit of all of us. We are a stronger region when we collaborate, and I will keep you all posted as we proceed. This past Tuesday, December 10th, I joined several of you, as well as county administration, in visiting McHenry County College for the MCEDC Annual Meeting of Investors and visiting the new home of the McHenry County Economic Development Corporation. I can't think of a better location for the MCEDC. They can show off all of the ways that MCC contributes to our world-class workforce from the New Foglia Center for Advanced Technology and Innovation to the New University Center in Woodstock that offers residents the opportunity to earn a four-year college degree right here in McHenry County. Congratulations to MCEDC Executive Director Mark Picos, and thank you to Ms. Greeno, Mr. Collins, Ms. Campbell, and Mr. Shorten for joining me that evening. Congratulations to CFO Carrie Wise and her staff once again for receiving the Certificate of Achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its annual comprehensive financial report for the 2023 fiscal year. On behalf of myself and the county board, thank you for your professionalism and dedication in ensuring that we are the best stewards of taxpayer money that we can be. And that concludes my remarks. Also, immediately following this meeting, you are all cordially invited to attend the annual holiday luncheon for county staff. Please join us to wish our hard-working and dedicated staff a very happy holiday season. Any members' comments this morning? Mr. Kaminski?
I'd like to give a shout-out and kudos to the 22nd Judicial Circuit. This week, I had the privilege and honor of serving as a jurist over there in their courtroom. It shows you and brings you to the realization that the Constitution works. It's alive, and you're appreciative of all the men and women that have come before us that gave their all to preserve that Constitution. That is one of the finest, well-oiled machines that I've seen over there, be it from the Sheriff's Department all the way to the Judges' Chamber. They run it professionally, and you see the result, that their rights are protected. Everybody works together. I encourage any of the citizens in McHenry County that does get a jury summons, please take that with pride. Go down there. You will be impressed. You will learn what the Constitution is, seeing it firsthand, and you will be the best ambassador to go out into the community to allow the people to know that we have the best court in the state, I believe. Thank you.
Ms. Althoff?
Thank you. Just as the county gave you a little something to keep you warmer during the holidays, District 6, Carl Kaminski and I gave you something to keep the holidays a little sweeter. So, the chocolate lollipop you can consume yourself or share with a grandchild is from Carl and I with the best wishes for Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And it came from not our district, but from Riverside Chocolate Factory, which is from the district of Deana and Terry, and I think they gave us some sweets, too. So, thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Gotamaller?
Yes. You have in your mailboxes a big envelope. It is from Pace, and Pace and the RTA are in the middle of redoing a comprehensive plan. They did not give us much time, but if you want to have your input into the next 20 years of what Pace is going to do, there's a place to do a survey on it. Please do it. We were at MACOG last night. Erin Smith brought it up there, and she's our Pace representative, and so she has asked us to remind everybody, it is your chance. If you see something on the maps in here, we talked, we were sitting with some people from Maringo, you know, there's an example of Pace won't have that on their list, the future increases or the future employment that may come to the intersection of 23 and 90 unless somebody brings it to them. So, please take 10 minutes, look at this stuff, and go online, scan, and do your survey. Thank you.
Ms. Greeno?
Yes. I just wanted to say that District 5 was also wishing the board a Merry Christmas with a delightful Christmas cookie from Blessed Little Kitchen, which is in, I believe, Jim and Mike's, Jim Kearns and Mike Shorten's district. Is that right? No, no, no. Well, Mike Scala. Oh, my gosh. How could I?
We have Blessed Little Kitchen. It's beautiful.
Oh, it is fantastic. I mean, you guys, they don't only look pretty, but they taste really good. So, Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll proceed to public comment. Just a reminder that this is your opportunity to address the board. You will have three minutes in which to do so. If you've not concluded your comments within the three-minute period, the red light will come on in front of me, and I would ask you to summarize your comments. First up will be Jack Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Actually, I think one of you was a little surprised. I am here to testify in favor of a self-storage facility in the west side of Crystal Lake, even though I own three self-storage facilities on the north and east side of Crystal Lake. In the final analysis, I am and always have been a free enterprise Republican, so I'm not asking you to protect my monopoly. I'm asking you to make a decision based on facts. The simple fact is, there is a lot of storage in Crystal Lake, and I can understand why the city feels that way. Oh, yeah, they zoned and permitted almost every bit of it. But if I were 20 years younger, I would be standing here trying to get a location on the west side because there's east, north, and south. There's plenty of storage, but the west side, there is none. In the storage business, the first thing they teach you is you put a pin in the map and you start drawing circles, and within three to five miles, you're going to get 60 or 70% of your customers. The west side of Crystal Lake has nothing. There's nothing in the Ridgefield or that area. It is a site that makes sense. Interestingly enough, the city of Crystal Lake, which has every right to protest, just authorized a rather large, two-story storage facility at the corner of 31 and 176, their entranceway, I might add, in that direction, that I will be able to see from my office. I can shoot an arrow from one of my other storage facilities, and there are no less than six storage facilities within a mile and a half or two and a half miles. But they did that. I know they would prefer to have places that generate a lot of sales, tax, or jobs. Unfortunately, the big boxes are being torn down or turned into storage. That's not really an option. This is a logical place to build it, and it will serve the public in that area well. I would also like to say that while I would not call myself a good friend of the gentlemen that are trying to build it, I know enough about them in the industry. They have small facilities compared to you all and what have you, in Maringo, Lake in the Hills, and Carpentersville, and they're good people. They run a good operation, and I frankly am a little confused by the city's opposition to it because it makes sense on every level. Thank you for your time.
Brett Sigmeyer, followed by Kerry Sigmeyer.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. As was mentioned, my name is Brett Sigmeyer, and I'm representing the sellers of the property owned by Anna and Gary Sigmeyer, who are my parents, Ken and Shirley Kayler, longtime residents of Crystal Lake, and Walt and Linda Rosequist, longtime residents of Woodstock. Unfortunately, as I stand here today, three of those longstanding residents of McHenry County are no longer with us, Anna and Gary and Walt. But for decades, the owners of Flowerwood, which is now known as Flowerwood Nursery LLC, which was the Sigmiers, Kaylers, and Rosequists, as mentioned, they proudly owned and operated one of the finest and well-known nursery/garden centers in the nation, really, and the premier flower shop in McHenry County in northeastern Illinois. The best landscaping services, materials, and the best Christmas shop around for miles, which I'm assuming a lot of you have visited over the years. They also dedicated themselves to their philanthropic ventures. They passed their passion for being stewards of their community to the children who carry on with this, to their children who carry on with this philanthropy in McHenry County through Casa McHenry County, Service League of Crystal Lake, and other local nonprofits. In June of 2004, Gary, Ken, and Walt sold 10 acres of the Flowerwood property. There's been interest in the remaining property over the last 20 years, but nothing has been the right fit. We, the sellers, have been challenged for two decades to sell the remaining 17 acres due to the lack of city services such as sewer and water available at this property. The president of Flowerwood, Ken Kayler, has made several attempts to offer his vast knowledge to help the city invest in city services to develop this entryway into Crystal Lake with no success. My sister and I, our spouses, and the families representing the sellers are very confident that Prairie Enterprises LLC is the right fit to carry this property into the next phase of development. They have gone above and beyond to ensure that they have met and exceeded the city of Crystal Lake requirements, and more importantly, McHenry County requirements, to ensure the project will be aesthetically pleasing, environmentally friendly, and of the highest-quality build-out. We would sincerely appreciate your support of the zoning change from the current B1 to the B3 classification. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Kerry Sigmeyer? Jeff Podlasak?
I'd like to refer my minutes to Kyle. We'll speak later.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bruce Basau. I'm president of Premier Commercial Realty, been doing business in the area for 55 years. And I've also been in the storage business, and I've known the family that's looking to build this facility, and the properties that they have are very well-maintained. They keep them up nicely, the landscaping, everything. They're good businesspeople. And again, I am an enterprise proponent. We're trying to build up America here, and anytime I can help somebody get into business or help them, that's my job. And I can't tell you how enthusiastic I am about this project. It'll be a nice-looking project. There'll be very little seen from the highways itself with their landscaping plans and so on, but I think it's a good business to have in McHenry County, and I want to, you know, entertain getting the zoning on it. But they're really good people. Again, I've known them for many, many years, and I can't speak more highly of them. They'll be a good addition, and it's, you know, a good project, but I hope you give it a good, positive approach on it. I've sat in your seats, and I know you always look to see whether this is going to hurt anybody or be an arse or a reason why not to. That's our job, to, you know, protect the public. However, they don't always look at, hey, what's the, you know, what's the good side of this? And if you get a good business with a good businessman that knows the business, has a good track record, and you have very little concern about it being a first-class operation on there. As far as the need for storage, typically, all over, we're needing more and more storage that, you know, I think they've been in the business long enough, they know that it will be successful. Thank you. Have a good morning.
I'd like to refer, do I sign Kyle?
Okay.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for letting me speak today. And first of all, Happy Holidays, and wish everybody a happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year coming up. We are Prairie Enterprises. By dad and I have been in with Prairie Enterprises now since 2000. Prior to that, we have had family businesses here in McHenry and Kane County since late '70s, early '80s. We go ahead and have, we established Maringo in the year 2000, and then from there, we went ahead and a couple of years later, opened up our location off of Pyramid Road in Lake and Hills. And then a couple of years after that, we acquired Big Stuff Storage, which is just down the street. And then after that, we went ahead and expanded in Maringo with another additional two buildings, along with, at the same time, building Carpentersville, two additional buildings, and redoing the, what is the Cardinal Free Press Building on William Street, totally revamped that whole entire square footage. And then after that, we went ahead and then built on again in Lake and Hills with an additional parking spot right prior to COVID, which is very good because everybody was buying RVs at the time. So, this is a good fit for our company. We're expanding. We're always looking for new opportunities. This is a great opportunity for the west side. We do have people that do live or actually currently rent from us that are in Crystal Lake on that portion. We also have other renters from Huntley, from McHenry County. So, this is a good fit for this area because of the fact that you need something in the north. So, we recognize that the property on the corner of Route 176 and 14 would be a great opportunity for that. We went ahead and brought this to your planning and zoning committee, which then, at that point, gave us unanimous approval to go ahead with this project. And then it came up here to be presented to you as a committee of the whole and to be voted on. At that time, the city of Crystal Lake then went ahead and put on a three-quarters majority vote on this because they did not approve of this. Over the years, they've had other opportunities to go ahead and take opportunities to build something in that, but they have not, or annexed it. They had not. Our facility is not needing as much utilities as an average store would be. We have two employees. We, on average, only use maybe 20, 30 gallons of water a day for those employees to basically go to the bathroom, wash their hands, do other activities. They also need to make sure that they are using water for cleaning, so we are not in a need for that type of service of needing city water. So, we can get a well, we can do a septic, we can also do a storage tank like we do in Maringo. Then, on your request, we went ahead and went to the city of Crystal Lake and went ahead and asked them to have zoning, and they, basically, we met with the mayor and one other city council member, and when we first walked in, the first thing out of the mayor's spoke was, "I'm up to here with storage." And so, at that point, we talked about what we could do for the community and stuff like that, and he went ahead and just said, "No, it's not a good fit." Then, we went to their planning and zoning committee, presented a whole entire plan, concept plan, for storage and also retail, retail in the north. That would change their whole entire gateway to the community atmosphere. So, that whole entire area to the north would then change, it would actually enhance their gateway to their community. Also, it would also help with the community college with the manner of having something there that might be retail, might be another restaurant, might be something good for the students. So, in that manner, we're looking, we're asking for the B1 to B3 change so that we can open up the aspect of having more and more opportunities for that development. Then, after the, we went to the planning and zoning committee where we received unanimous no's, and that was set forward because of what the mayor had said. Then, we went to the city planners and asked, "Where could we build?" They went ahead and said, "You can build up north in an industrial park that's buried." Nobody would even know that we were there. So, what we're coming now back to you is, with your opportunity, we want to go ahead and build and expand. We're there to make sure that the watershed is protected, the overall facility is done expertisely. We want to make sure that it looks beautiful. We want to make sure that it's fit for the community. It will have multiple use for, also for residential, but it will also be for businesses, too. Big Stuff Storage is 15 by 40 or 15 by 80 units. We have a lot of industrial companies that are with us right now in the city of Lake and Hills. We have a waiting list that is about 30 to 40 people long that are looking for these kind of units because it's easier for them to have this as an area to prep their sites, get ready for their inventory to be coming in, and instead of having a whole entire retail strip mall area where that they would be.
Give a final three minutes.
So, what we're asking for is that we went ahead and made a concept plan, and it does have storage in it, but that could change. We're looking for mainly for zoning. We're working for the B1 to B3 so that we can open up to a lot of things. A lot more retail. We can even put retail on the south on the corner of 176 and 14 on the south side where the McDonald's is, down on that side, or we can go to north with also retail. And in between, we can put the storage units. It'd be buried. Whatever goes into the Flowerwood that's currently there would also, once it's built, would block anything else, so the storage units would not be actually seen. But as you said, the demand for the fact that we're building houses, we're building apartments, we're building condos, people need storage. The average person coming in is young, they want, they can only afford a small place to live, so they actually need an extension maybe to their house. So, this is a perfect opportunity for them to be able to use storage for an extension onto their house. So, in all, we would greatly appreciate your approval of this zoning so that we can go ahead and improve the gateway to the community for Crystal Lake and for McHenry County and for the community as a whole, as a great service for what the citizens of McHenry County and Kane County and really everybody needs. Thank you very much for your time. Merry Christmas.
Mike Deacon?
I'm fighting a head cold, so please bear with me. My name is Mike Deacon. I usually refrain from getting up in public meetings because I leave that to the site planners, the architects, the buyers, but in this particular case, there were some things, there was some action taken, there were some words printed, there were some words spoken that, to me, just didn't make any sense with regard to what was proposed for this particular site. As a matter of disclosure, I am a real estate broker, and I do represent the buyer. Prior to representing the buyer, I represented the seller in the 20-year, or portion of the 20 years that it was for sale. And for, and during that long period of time, we were only able to generate one contract that would, you would say, was a commercial retail development. And if I mention the name, you'd know, everyone here would know who it is. I'm not going to do that. But after 15, 30 days of due diligence, and I also who it is. I'm not going to do that. But after 15, 30 days of due diligence, and I also represented him in a dual agency situation, he called me and said, there's four reasons I can't go forward to this commercial development. He said, number one, the watershed. This land is in the watershed. Now, there are two ordinances, city and county, kind of mirror one another. And the ordinances were good because you went from 20% coverage, impervious, to maybe as much as 80%. But the ability to get to that 80% was pretty expensive, or could be expensive. You also have city water and sewer. When I first listed, the city water was nowhere near. Now it's across 14. So it's nearby. But the sewer system, the sanitary sewer, the city said that there are two locations, one behind your McHenry County Animal Control Center, and the other one is down the road on East on 176. And whether you have force mains or gravity mains and lift stations or whatever in the size of the main, it's about a million dollars to bring sanitary sewer to this site. Too expensive for most developments. The other problem you have here is much of the land is experienced as a high water table. So you can't put a massive structure on the 17 acres without doing something to make the soil allow for that structure. So you have to find something that, as they say in the architectural industry, is more lightweight. And if you put a commercial development at this site, you have IDOT who may come back and say, we need turn lanes. We need deceleration lanes. And that could be expensive. We've had some recent inquiries, but none of them, in my opinion, would be as good as a storage facility. Would you like a pet cemetery with a crematorium? I don't think so. Would you like more solar farms? Probably not. How about two massive truck stops with 100,000 gallons of fuel oil? No. We had an inquiry for a trailer park. We all have opinions of trailer parks. We had a company, a paint company, a national company that said, we want to put easels upon easels on 17 acres, put paint swabs and see how the weather and the sunlight affects those. Would you rather see that? We also had a major insurance company call us and say, we'd like to pave the entire 17 acres. We'll comply with the watershed. And we want to park 2,000 cars that have been damaged in floods or in accidents. I don't think you want that either. When you factor in the costs and you factor in what can work, whether it's storage or something similar to storage, it makes a lot of sense. It's just common sense. And as Jack Schaefer pointed out, most storage facilities congregate at points of confluence, 14 and 176, 14 and 31, and this site. It makes sense. It's more. And if you think it's, we've heard the argument, well, this is the gateway. Well, there's no such thing as a gateway. That's a myth. You want a gateway, put a sign here that says this is a gateway. Then it's a gateway. Other than that, it's just where cars congregate in a, in a large intersection. People in government use the term gateway to justify something they don't want to, they don't want to do or see. In my business, we kind of laugh when we hear that term. Now, it is important, though, that the right thing be put in this site and, and probably the only thing that makes sense for the reasons I mentioned, would be storage or something that's lightweight. Does that mean I have three minutes left?
You got one minute left.
Okay. The last thing I'm going to talk about is apartments. If you add up all the apartments that have been built in the last seven years in Crystal Lake, those that have been under construction, those that have been approved, and those 500 or so that haven't even been brought to the city yet, you got about 2,000 apartments. You know what 2,000 apartments do? They scream they have more storage. People downsize from 3,000 square feet down to 1,400. They need storage. You get divorced, you need two storage units. You get married, maybe you need one. And as for the reasons ever mentioned. So I firmly believe that whether it's storage or some non-low volume commercially used is the most appropriate use for this location. I've been in the business for 20 years. I know what's right. I know what's wrong. I know what works. Thank you.
That concludes our public camera. We'll move on to presentations. Our guest star today is Treasurer Donna Kurtz with her update on our investment portfolio.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, county board members. It's absolutely a delight to be here in front of our new county board. I welcome our new county board members. It's wonderful to begin to develop the relationship with you. And I'm so pleased to be here with my other friends and longtime colleagues in some cases who are on the county board. Thank you again for allowing me to come before you today, Chairman. I know you always have other options of who can come and speak. And I'm glad you've allowed myself to come and represent my colleagues in the treasurer's office, sitting in the back row, Francine, Kelly, and Holly. So thank you for coming as well. Is this, let's see. You know what? Is that okay? All right. Well, I want to make sure you understand that today we're going to talk about the investment policy. That's the guiding light of how we run our operations when it comes to managing, in this case, tens of millions of dollars. And at the same time, we're going to talk about the investments that are made and how we make them. So the first thing is, let's talk about what we're going to talk about. And that has to do with, hey, what, what is my role as the investment manager for our money? Secondly, I want to make sure there's an understanding of our legacy as investment managers. You know, we, we rent the seat, don't we, as elected officials? So I come, you know, after many others who have been treasurers, and they have set a very good legacy as well, which we have been lucky to build upon. Before we get to that, I also wanted to talk about our investment status. I want to talk to you about what we've achieved and give you some perspective of how we'll continue to build on our success. And then we'll get into the investment policy. The investment policy is going to be highlights. Why? Because I don't want you to fall asleep. I want you to get on with your meeting. And a policy can be very, very boring, but I'll make it as exciting as possible. And then finally, I know you'll have some questions for me. I really encourage that. You might make me think differently. You might help us to do better. So first off, my, my job in the investment arena is dictated by statute. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in, in the next few slides. The, the next thing I want to talk about is simply, you know, over the years, we used to be a CD shop. And we were, we were focused on local banks. And we would buy CDs. And I remember sitting in a board meeting in which I was looking at several pages of CDs and thinking, oh, how interesting. What a way to make money. But you know what? It worked then. Interest rates were higher and that's what was done. Then around 2016, 20, you know, in that arena, Glenda moved forward and said, hey, let's do the idea of having an investment broker, a bond broker, who buys and sells bonds. And you get a call saying, hey, I got a really good bond. I think it would be perfect for. And so that, that approach continued. And, and in fact, I came into office and I, I didn't ever feel completely comfortable with it. And thus had the opportunity to move towards an investment management approach. And, and we've, we've really gone full bore into it. It's been an enormous amount of work, which my staff can attest to. But it was something that needed to be done. You know, turning the, the, the big huge ship in the ocean takes a lot of effort. And as much as you plan, you don't know what you're going to come into. So that, that certainly is probably one reason that the change didn't happen as soon as it might have. So what does that mean? Investment management? Well, I just talked about the broker, buy and sell, mostly buy. Structuring and optimization of the portfolio is really what an investment manager does. They're looking at the overall portfolio. And as you'll see in a few minutes, our portfolio has grown dramatically. And that has huge positive implications, of course, for our taxpayers. Secondly, with an investment management team, we've got diverse investment options. And that too is very exciting because that allows us to build a much stronger productive portfolio. And then finally, we're able to achieve a risk managed return. And I'll, I'll kind of elaborate on that. So kind of in summary, the investment management model is, is going to, in fact, allow us to build better risk adjusted returns. The possibility of high volatility, which is not what we want when we are managing the public's money, is minimized dramatically with an investment management model. And so what we're looking at is building the overall return of the portfolio. I mean, I love talking about those bonds that we got, you know, six, seven, one of them, 9%. I do. It's fun. But in the end, it's really, what is that portfolio really generating for me overall? And how, how, how stable am I? How much can I count on the stability of that return, those returns in that portfolio? So that is, in contrast, then, to brokering bonds to get the best deal at any given point. So we're moving away from that. And so in, in, in that context, we've, we've grown. We've more than doubled the amount of money that we are managing. Now, we're seeing some declines in that amount because ARPA. And ARPA expenditures are coming due. And so we're, we're working on turning that money into real projects, real value for the taxpayer. And I've really enjoyed working with Carrie on that element of management. And I also want to mention that we've generated, we, we project for 2024 somewhere around $3, $3 million that we will generate. So the investment policy, we're, now we're getting into the really exciting, non-boring stuff, right? The investment policy is really guided by the Public Investment Act per Illinois statute. And it applies to the funds that are under my jurisdiction. I have had recently an opportunity to potentially help another unit of government that has some county money. But frankly, people don't have to listen to me if they're not part of McHenry County funds under my jurisdiction. But if they do, we can generate, I think, some very good returns. So on that, I do want to mention that we follow the statute. The statute sets the parameters. If there are times when we are more restrictive than the policy, would then take precedence. So now, let's talk about what is it that we invest in? I mean, this whole thing seems nebulous until you start thinking about, what does it mean? Well, we look at bonds and stocks. Those are our premier, you know, vehicles for investment when we're talking about this kind of thing. But, you know, think about it. A bond is about a loan. And a bond is about generating income. And that's what we want as government officials. A stock is about building wealth, and it's about volatility. So it's, it's the ownership of a company. So guess what? We're not investing in stocks. What does that mean? We're not investing in mutual funds. We're not investing in ETFs. Stocks are too volatile, and it would risk the public's money. We just can't do that. So we don't. We, we're focused on bonds. In that same vein, there are risky bonds. So we've got to be focused on that as well. So safety of principle. That means credit risk. We don't want any organization who we loan the money to to go out of business. And of course, we know probably the US government is going to be pretty stable. We'll take it from there. We'll talk about that in a second. Also, interest rate. We want to choose bonds that are not real sensitive to interest rate fluctuations. And we do that by managing the maturity of that particular asset. Liquidity. You know, how would you like to give me your money, and I won't have it available for you for 20 years, and oh boy, by the way, you've got a, you know, half million dollar project. You need it in a short amount of time. Liquidity matters. And government liquidity matters. We don't take money from taxpayers so we can invest it. We take money from taxpayers to give them services. And oh, by the way, if we have a little bit of lag time, well, let's make some money on it. But otherwise, we've got to serve our taxpayers. And then finally, yield. Let's be market responsible. Let's not get the lowest yield because of safety issues. Let's get the best yield per our safety issues. And, and that again is where having an investment manager who's looking at things every day and looking at the best opportunities for us helps us with that yield issue. So what kind of investments are we talking about? Well, the gold standard is US Treasuries. Now, the problem with those is they don't pay that well. They, they're usually 50, maybe even 100 basis points, 100 basis points being a percent. They pay less than things such as US agencies, like an SBA loan, like mortgage backed securities from Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae. But these are, these can be very good producers too. They have some limitations. They have some issues, callable issues, you know, they can be paid back sooner, which we don't always like. Muni bonds, this is a whole new area. We have not invested in muni bonds in the past because we had a broker that, guess what? He specialized in. He specialized in agencies. Oh, so we only had one type of bond for the most part that we invested in. Well, guess what? Muni bonds allow us to make investments as appropriate in our community, in our state, or in other municipal opportunities. The, the quality of the investment, however, will dictate what we invest in. We're not going to invest in a McHenry County bond opportunity unless it's, it's highly rated and we have the guarantees we need, as an example. Corporate bonds, again, a new area that we have not invested in. The investment policy now takes that into account. Again, sanctioned, supported by statute. And corporate bonds is going to give us another arrow in the quiver. It's a powerful way to manage our yield and give us yield that's different than maybe an agency that isn't paying well. And we have some strict limitations on the corporates. But again, you know, corporates, things like a Google, for example, and Apple, you know, top quality, top companies potentially could be our corporate bond purchase. And then local investment pools. These are things like the Illinois Municipal Investment Trust. And these are, they, these all follow the statute. So it's an easy win for us to invest money. And, and that's always a potential. Okay. Now, let's talk about, you know, just our strategies. And strategies is simply, we want to get different types of bond types in there. I've kind of gone through that. We want to match maturities with spending. When I meet with my portfolio owners for the general fund, for Valley High, for ARPA, you know what we start talking about? Not about the yields, not about what they've invested in. It's when do you need the money? What is your cash flow need? What is your cash flow need? That's the starting point because we can't invest money that is needed to pay bills. So then number three, corporate bonds. Hey, we're limited to three years. We don't want to take any risks with our corporate bonds. We know things change in the business environment, so we try and minimize risk in that way. Weighted average, the overall portfolio can't exceed four years. And at this point, we're somewhere around 2.5 in that arena for our average maturity rate. So I think that's very important. Why? Because when you need the money, hey, you need the money. And then finally, quarterly reporting. This is an area that I think has had a lot of opportunity area. And you're going to see some better reporting come the first meeting in January. What we're doing is, you've been receiving a list of investment securities, of which, in fact, County Board Hendricks once asked the great question, what does all this mean? And they were very good questions regarding those security lists, which are just gobbledygook. Eric certainly helped us define what was in those. However, we want to do something more impactful and show you what are the real returns happening with these portfolios. So you'll see some improvement in that arena as well. We may, we will initially do quarterly reporting. I think that's more meaningful than every month because month-to-month doesn't always tell us the real picture. And finally, the adoption of the investment policy means that I'm coming to you today to tell you about the investment policy. That's part of my investment policy, that I come and tell you about it. And also, I come and tell you when I change things about it, or I come every year and tell you about it. You know, we're a team. I need to keep you informed. I need to have your input. So that's part of this process as well. So how do you get to that investment policy? You go to our website and download it. And just to be specific, the first thing you do is you go to that little red box on treasure data, click there, and you'll see a variety of things. One of them, though, is the investment policy, and you can download that. It's an eight-page document, easy reading. And my way of thinking, I think it's a lot of fun to read, but I'll leave that to you. You can also see the investment icon, and that'll take you to that as well. And those icons are at the bottom of every one of our pages, so. So that concludes our conversation for today. So now, it's on you. Do you have some questions for me?
Mr. Sager?
First, Treasurer, thank you so much for your presence today and for that exceptional report. As you look at decisions for bond purchases, is there preference given to Illinois corporations or any preference considerations or points that are given in terms of location or sites of business or that type of thing?
Yes. I have informally had those conversations with my investment managers. I have two investment managers. And I've had that informal conversation because of your input, which I think is completely valid. It's been in the back of my mind. As you recall, we've had input at finance and audit meetings regarding that. I think that's a good point. Let me think about how I might formalize that in the investment policy, and then I'll provide you with an update. So, thank you.
Ms. Van Hoff?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, I have laryngitis, but I had to ask this question. In one of the earlier slides, you mentioned something about the ARPA expenditures coming due. And I know what that is and everything, but can you just speak a little more on what happened to those ARPA funds when they came to us from the feds and how they are being held now? You know, what kind of investment strategies are you using for that? And then, when, I mean, I know some of this may be out of your purview, but maybe kind of give us an idea about when we're going to start having to spend that money?
Yes. Well, Carrie's getting ready to answer that question. But before she does, let me answer what I can answer. And that is that this is an extreme case of making investments based on when the money would be needed. So we looked at starting to pare down investments with maturity dates happening this year in a big way. And if you're interested, I'd be glad to show you how we basically free up both principal and interest over a trend line. And it allows us to, again, meet our ARPA obligations, which, as you all know, impact all kinds of projects all over the county. And the county was good enough to be a steward of it, but the county was also smart to make a fair amount of money on the investment income, which was just a total win, for sure. Carrie, do you want to take on any of these other questions, or do you want to do that at a different time?
Do you have other questions?
No, you did a really good job, Donna, of explaining that.
Okay.
Carrie, if you have anything you would like to add, I would like to hear it, though, regarding...
You know, Donna and I talk a lot. The ARPA stuff is kept in a separate portfolio. And really, that's our focus because all the money has to be spent by '26, so of course, that's when we all need it to come back. And we were, you know, I think, a little more aggressive with the amount that we had invested, knowing that any of the interests we receive, you know, the board can use for whatever it decides.
Yes. And interest has rolled into the general fund for quite some time. I know we've made some changes recently, but from an accounting standpoint, but that money has all gone towards the general fund, which provides some alleviation of taxpayer burden, which I think we can all be proud of.
Yeah, thank you. I commend you for doing this. Instead of just letting it sit there, invest in it when you can and not taking it out until you need it. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Donna's done those for us. I just tell everyone I need money.
And sometimes, it's not always pretty. I want this. Just kidding.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, and thank you, Treasurer, for your report and all the work you've done over the last couple of years to really bring things up to speed. We appreciate it. I'm noticing that the current investment policy was just recently adopted. How often do you anticipate reviewing that? Is that by state statute, or do you have a timeline that you would like to see?
As a minimum, annually. We'll be coming before you annually. However, I am really serious about taking Board Member Sager's suggestion into a formalization because if appropriate, if we have, you know, an investment opportunity that pays well, you know, it meets our criteria for quality, and we're also contributing to, you know, the strength, the economic strength of our community or region or state, why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we make that a priority? Again, you know, it's, as you guys who know me know me, it's all about the money. I want to get the most money for investments that meet my criteria. And my criteria is the state's statute criteria. And so, you know, I would not be investing to a local opportunity at the expense of yield. I just would not. You know, the other issues there, too, safety, et cetera. So, anyway, but I, so to answer your question, and I'm not answering your question, if we make some changes tomorrow, I'm going to come back, or I'll talk to the chairman, maybe send out an email, you know, and let you know. You guys need to know how I run my business, and I'm making up for lost time at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Treasurer Kurtz, very informative.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Chairman. It's been a pleasure.
Thanks.
And season's greetings, everybody.
Okay, move on to new business. Do any members have items from next Tuesday's agenda they'd like to remove for discussion? Mr. Gottermaller?
13A.
Mr. Scala?
10C1.
Ms. Greenow?
16B2.3 and 16B...
16B2.2?
2.3 and 16B2.7.
So 2.2, 2.3, and 2.7, or just 2.3 and 2.7?
Just 2.3 and 2.7.
Okay, first one, 10C1, Mr. Scala?
Yeah, this was the same zoning position that we had had before us before, and then the county board voted to give some time for the applicant to go to the city of Crystal Lake, which, based on the information and public comment today, that sounds like they did try to do that. You know, for me, this is a situation where B1 zoning, which is what it is currently, is not appropriate for what our 2030 comprehensive plan shows, which is B3. And so for me, it's not about storage units, nothing personal, Jack, but it's about the zoning. Because once we make it B3, it can be anything that is allowed in B3 for the county. And I think, based on the comprehensive plan and what our long-range vision is for this piece of property, B3 is appropriate. It is a shame, I feel, that Crystal Lake did submit their letter of objection, which now makes us have to have 14 yes votes. And the fact that Mr. Gottermaller has to recuse himself, that means that, basically, there can only be three no votes. I think that that burden put on by Crystal Lake is, to me, disingenuous. You know, if you look at the testimony, which is what we're supposed to be doing when we weigh these things, they sent the letter, but they didn't have anyone even attend to offer any evidence at the hearing. We have not had anyone from the city of Crystal Lake come to any of our meetings to weigh in on it. I do feel that this is the best appropriate use of the land, and I will be for sure voting yes. And again, I'm a little disappointed in how the city of Crystal Lake has handled that. I know I'm not supposed to be calling out situations, but it, to me, that is somewhat inappropriate. But thank you.
Mr. Sager?
Thank you, Chairman. And with respect to my colleague's commentary, which I agree is finding us or placing us in a difficult position, I just have some comments with regards to the petition that's on the table for consideration next Tuesday night. First, we're honored to have Senator Schaefer with us, and I could not agree more that, you know, we have an opportunity and responsibility to uphold free-market enterprise. And I am very much attuned with that as an economist and certainly as an individual who appreciates what individuals who are willing to take the risk of business bring to the table and offer to communities or to the larger region and to the state. So I want to thank the individuals for the petition that is before us and your diligence in terms of the effort that has been made. I do want to say with all due respect and appreciation, however, that, you know, zoning questions are frequently very difficult questions to approach. And to me, it comes down most frequently to a question of compatibility, and I think that's where we need to focus. Now, I do want to make a couple of other comments before getting into too much detail with regards to that. But the first would be, you know, we, as a body, have lamented multiple times the fact that when it comes to solar farms, we don't really have too much of a choice here. The reason we don't have choices is because the state has superseded our planning jurisdiction or our planning authority there and just said, you're going to approve these types of things. And so I think we do not appreciate the fact when the state comes in and supersedes that jurisdiction. Having come from a strong municipal background, I did not appreciate it when the county came in and, in my mind, superseded the municipal planning efforts there. This particular property is factually within the mile-and-a-half planning jurisdictional area of the city of Crystal Lake. And the city of Crystal Lake has made their point and their objection very clear, whether they were present personally to do that or whether they have adequately forwarded their just reasons is a question for all of us to consider individually. But in fact, they have objected to the petition which is before us. I have a hard time, as a county, saying, too bad, we're going to make this decision when it's in their mile-and-a-half planning area. So that's one concern that I have. The second thing is with regards to the issue of the watershed. It is within Crystal Lake's watershed. They have done a lot of work for many years to protect that watershed and to protect the purity of the Crystal Lake itself. I appreciate the fact that the petitioner has indicated that they believe that they can uphold the regulations, the rules, the requirements, and can mitigate any potential concerns there. I'm grateful for that. I appreciate that. It doesn't diminish necessarily the concerns that I would share or that the city of Crystal Lake has in my mind. The final thing that I just want to comment upon is the fact that this issue of compatibility is very important. And I think that as we look at that issue, one of the things that we have to do is to look at the standards for approval, if you will, of a zoning change. And certainly, there are three areas, I think, which are potentially of question that I just want to raise. The first is the compatibility of the proposed zoning with existing use and zoning of nearby property. And I think that that is open for interpretation. I believe that the current B1 zoning is more appropriately compatible with existing zoning of nearby properties. So that's the position that I take on that. The second one has to do with item as identified in the staff report, E, the suitability of the property for the purposes for which it is presently zoned. I think that it is suitable for the B1 zoning. I think that that is most appropriate in terms of planning as seen by Crystal Lake, and I would suggest by the county as well. And the last is the consistency of the proposed amendment with the adopted comprehensive plan and the appropriateness of the comprehensive plan to the subject property. I do believe that, again, B1 zoning, as presently exists, is appropriate in the comprehensive plan of the county as well as municipality to that particular property. So for those reasons, I will be voting against this zoning petition change. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Regarding this petition, the ZBA voted 60 yes to recommend it to be approved. I have read the testimony and the letter of objection. I guess we can all read the letter of objections, it's in our packet, and judge for ourselves the validity of the argument from the city of Crystal Lake. I personally think that the testimony given at the ZBA meeting was valid and appropriate, and I will be voting to support this petition on Tuesday night. I would just like to ask staff if they have anything else that they would like to add. I would just like to ask staff if they have anything else that they would like to add. I know a lot of it was said. I believe that the city of Crystal Lake and the petitioner just could not agree on some of their differences on this, or maybe the objection would have been withheld. Adam, do you have a...
Not a lot of, you know, anything new to bring to the table. I'll say it that way. A lot of the items that you guys have been discussing are going to be citations right out of the staff report or the hearing, the testimony, et cetera. You know, one of the items that I will highlight, some of the concerns that are raised in the city's letter specific to the stormwater management ordinance in the Crystal Lake watershed, those items are covered within the SMO. So there's confidence on our side that those items will be addressed appropriately. Some of the other items that are leading to the issues are what you're deliberating. That's what we would have to offer. If there's any other specific questions or something that maybe you expected me to say, I'll gladly touch on.
No, I didn't have any expectations, Adam. I just didn't know if you had something you wanted to add to it. So our requirements, et cetera, will address any kind of watershed issues and protect the property, protect the neighbors, et cetera. The rest of it boils down to whether the city of Crystal Lake thinks it's appropriate or not, and once again, you can read the letter and judge the validity of that for yourself, but I will be voting in favor of the petitioner on Tuesday night. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel?
I was in favor of this. Moon's back when we first were presented with all this. The county did their job, they approved this, this is a great fit for the site. Politics obviously came into this and muddied the water with this, as does politics with the solar panel that our governor put on us. But that again, that's politics aside, and Crystal Lake's had 20 years to do something about this in their area and have not. We as a county can't be held hostage by what they think they might want to do in another 20 years. This is appropriate, the B3 is appropriate, and has been improved on all levels for McHenry County. Let's let these good people who've worked very hard and done their due diligence, let's let them move forward with this project and enhance McHenry County. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Greenow?
I know that one of the intentions of this board is to enhance our service to the county and the constituents, and we've been looking for opportunities to increase housing. And with that and the growth that comes with that, we need to have services available. And certainly, this type of facility is going to be very functional and usage, useful, and then also to very considerate of the land. And so I think they've done an excellent job of making the presentation, and I agree. I'm sorry that this has gone on so long. I will be voting yes.
Ms. Campbell?
I won't go into too much more detail. I do appreciate Member Sager's comments about the appropriateness, the suitability to the zoning that the city of Crystal Lake has in that particular area. I think the fact that it's right on their corporate limits is a little, makes it a slightly different issue than if it were, you know, a mile, a mile and a half out, but still within the planning jurisdiction. Having some conversations last evening with some local civil engineers, we had been talking about the impact of, on the aquifers and water supply and that sort of thing in terms of our infrastructure. And with being so close to the corporate limits, the best way to protect the watershed, the Crystal Lake watershed, would be to tie into the water and sewer system rather than relying, at least in the discussions, not specifically about this project, but more in general, than relying on well and septic, which over time have, can leak and so forth. So these are some considerations that I'll be making as I make my decision, especially in terms of the fact that we are given legal authority to take into consideration the wishes of the city, and they have made clear that this is not compatible to what they would like to see there based on their own land use planning and comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Ms. Van Hoff?
Just as a small consideration, thank you, Chair. I live in Crystal Lake, so this is kind of personal to me. And when we had this discussion initially, I asked, "What would that mean?"
Could you pull your mic, could you pull your mic?
Yes, I'm sorry. I asked the question, "What that would mean if we changed the zoning to the current zoning to B3?" And Adam listed a whole list of things that could be put on that property if we did that. I don't know if you remember that, Adam. Okay. And so it's wide open, that's my concern. I will be voting no against this. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 13A, Mr. Godamaller?
Yes, thank you. Just reporting back on the committee on committees, we had our meeting a week and a half ago or a week ago. And I think as coming away from that meeting, there's some things that the board should understand that may not be clear to them. But first and foremost is, this board, the county's board, runs on committees. Not all county boards do. Boone County, for instance, does not use any committees at all. They meet with 12 people as a board, and they meet on every issue for every item. When we, other parts of the state use a commission form, they have generally five to seven members, and they, again, don't use committees at all, they meet on everything. The extreme example of the commission form is Los Angeles County. In terms of the size, their budget is number 13 in size of states compared to states, they have five members. And again, they don't operate with committees of board members because they only have five members. We've had 24 members and now 18 members, and as a result, when a committee meets and comes out with a recommendation, the other 11 members of this board usually take that committee's recommendation and go forward. And so when we sit as committees on committees, our job is to figure out what it is, you know, what are our board members' strengths and weaknesses? Where would they be most likely to sit? And where would they do the most good and bring the best to this board? We were lucky this time. Most of this board self-selected. Everybody had an opportunity to put down where they would like to be, and when we got done putting that down, we actually only had three places that were out of line. Administrative Services and Valley High were down three people. Finance and Transportation were up three people. We made some adjustments on those, so we do have three board members that didn't get everything they asked for, but that's not bad as a committee's concern. I would ask you all to take a look at it over the, you know, the next few days, and I would ask you to approve what the committee unanimously recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greenow?
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate very much the work that Member Godamaller put into the committee on committees, the selections. The statement that this committee's work on behalf of the board is true. In some cases, committees cannot possibly represent the makeup of this board. And so of course, when things come out of committees, we'll have to look at them and see where this recommendation stands with your position and, you know, enter a dialogue on that. It takes work, even if you're not on the committee, you have to be aware of what's going on on the committee, make sure that you are asking questions, getting those questions answered, and giving feedback to the committees. It's very important. I'm very happy with the results on the committee as far as the restraints that we had, and just wanted to make a comment about the effort that we need to put in on these committees. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further comment, Ms. Greenow, 16B 2.3?
Thank you. Sorry, okay. Okay, there was not a lot of opportunity in the Finance Committee to discuss the allocations of the ARPA funds, and so I wanted to just get clarification going forward with the roughly 3.3 million that we have. And right now, it is all designated to capital. Am I correct on that? Okay, all right. So being privileged to hear the original presentations for the ARPA and make approvals for those funds being allocated, there were many municipalities that had presented water and sewer projects, and I really think that it would be a great loss to us if we did not allocate some of this remaining money for water and sewer. I think that we are under the gun right now, we have to have this done in December, and there again hasn't been a lot of opportunity to look into exactly what our options are. And the reason that I mention this is that this is a possibly once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to go to some of our municipalities that are really impacting the economic development of this county and in some very fundamental ways. And we have some things that have been going on for, you know, problems for decades, and these are not the wealthy municipalities. These are not the municipalities where we've already seen all of the growth there, are basically launching with a lot, a lot of pressure on them. And so I really would encourage us between now and next Tuesday to understand what this means to split the allocation, and I would recommend that we look at possibly a 50-50 split between the municipality water sewer and then the capital projects for the county.
Mr. Kunkel?
And on that same vein, I didn't know you were going to speak on that, but we're running into a federal mandate soon here on this lead pipe issue, and some of the poorer municipalities are not assisting these homeowners, and some of these homeowners can't afford the $4,000 or $5,000 it takes to remove these lead water pipes to their homes. It's detrimental to children and detrimental to health, so that might be another little area that we could help these municipalities out with. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no further comments, 16B 2.7, Ms. Greenow?
Yes. I wanted to just make sure that I understood in the verbiage of this, and I thought, there's a lot of new people on the board, so I would just wanted to clarify. So on this, it says that this is going to increase the budget, but in fact, it's a grant that's going into the budget, so it's a net zero. And help me out on that, please. Are you talking or...
Who wants to take it, Melissa or Carrie?
Okay, so it's actually not currently in the budget because at the time of year when we do the budget, we don't yet have the actual grant dollars. So we always budget conservatively. So when we found out there was $87,000 additional, we have to add that into the budget so that we can use it.
Okay, so the grant is there, that the $87,000 will come from the grant, but it comes out of the budget to transfer the funds?
No. So the original, and I'm sorry, I don't have that number right in front of me, but whatever we budgeted during the budget time, this what, this contract wasn't executed until late in October. So $87,000 additional dollars were given to us by the state, that's currently not in our budget, so we have to add that into the budget. So we do have to increase our budget by $87,000 in order to use these funds. The other part of the grant is already budgeted.
Okay, I'm not sure what you just said. I'm just going to make sure that I do. I could be the only person in the room that's confused. But you said the state allocated $87,000, so we have to increase the budget by $87,000 to fin...
So the total grant is much bigger than that. The total grant is $439,243. So when we budgeted, so when we came before you, we didn't have that full $439,000 because we didn't know that's how much we were getting. So the 439 less the $87,000 would have been what we had budgeted. So now that we know we have that additional $87,000, we have to add it in. Does that make more sense?
Okay, so bottom line, this is a net wash, whatever you call it. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Oh, I see.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, everybody's got it? It's a net wash? All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further comment. Pete, you got a report for us today?
Yeah, thank you. And if I could just finish on Terry's comment, you know, this is an example how we have a $270 million budget. The property tax extension for next year is 66 million roughly, is that what it was? 65? That didn't change with this action, but the, that 270 just went up by 83 anyways. I had a written report for you on your desk, and I do have a couple of comments here if I can get them up here. I give you 14 pages, and why do I have a few more comments? But there's a few things I wanted to note, just pay special attention to in the written report. In Adam's comments on planning and development, he's noting that as of January 17th, we are going to electronic permitting in PND. So this is a big step, one we've been working forward for a long time, so looking forward to that. Also encourage you to take a look at the, there's a link to a video in the workforce session of the report, and it's a, it's a, it's a six-minute video that kind of shows how our problem-solving courts and our workforce have worked so well together, and I just would really encourage you to take a look at that. I wanted, I acknowledged Donna as she left, but she, she included a nice report in the report about property tax extension and how the cumulative property tax extension now countywide is approaching a billion dollars, and our county piece is just a little tiny bit, and it's going to be even smaller next year, but that was a nice report from Donna there. And then finally, Adam in his section in procurement is kind of giving us an update on, on the fiber project. And we do know now that the state has approved, the, the federal government has approved the state's MAPs for fiber, and that was official at the early December. The final step, which we think is coming in January now, is the project area units, where the state has divided the entire state into these little units that private industry gets to bid on to provide fiber and then get state support to make that happen. And we think that's going to be rolling out in January, and how fast it all happens is to be determined, but when the MAP gets out there, that's when the private companies, the Frontiers and Comcast and others are going to get in there and bid on those projects. So that's exciting. The last note I'll just have is, a week or so ago, I was part of a virtual meeting of county administrators, and we were doing kind of an idea exchange on, you know, how are you doing on election transitions and how do you, how do you, how do you deal with with new county board members? And I was really proud and a lot of, I saw a lot of ears perking up, talking about how our orientation went and when it was really kind of peer-to-peer and the great work that Brian and Pam did, kind of talking with our new county board members kind of on a peer-to-peer basis, and I'm just proud of it, and I wanted you guys to know that, so thank you. That's all.
Okay, I will just add that Mr. Godamaller and I this morning did our employee wellness test that's available to all county employees. Not today, but there will be two dates in January, January 27th and 29th, where you can participate. That includes board members, and if you do do that screening, you get a wonderful $300 gift card, so take advantage. It's well worth it. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Ms. Altough seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Have a great day.